There's um kind of an extra a better explanation of each one of those.
Oh, these are the references here?
Yeah, so each of the the um be it further resolved.
A six two five okay.
So it is six thirty three and call the meeting to order.
Shouldn't we be done by now?
Moving a little slow today, sorry. So we have one thing in front of us which is the memorializing resolution for rent stabilization control. So uh you print it up which each of the um the bills are that the resolution says that we would support if we decide to support this. Um and then a little example, little blurb of which each of these mean. Um so I don't know if anybody has any questions on it. So the idea is a lot of this is is gonna go to the state soon, which is why we're doing this kind of in front of some the finishing up the housing forums. Because if we waited until the end of it, it would've already gone through the state or not through the state. So this is just kind of saying that we, you know, have been paying attention, we have done a few of the hearings um and heard from tenants landlords and just the open forum, right?
Developers.
We get we have three.
Right, uh and um tenants landlords homeowners.
Oh yeah. Rent uh homeowners.
Uh-huh, thank you, I'll add this, yeah.
Renters.
Um so if anybody wants to go through some of these to kind of make sure that we're in agreement?
I have I have two questions.
Okay.
Um on the first paragraph where it said a what says affordable housing, but then says low and moderate income. Affordable and low income is not housing are not the same, so do we actually mean affordable?
Well, it's not low housing, it's affordable housing opportunities to serve low and moderate income residents, so I think that.
Okay. Which is thirty percent of somebody's income, right?
Yeah.
Okay. And then.
And and just so you know, this was based off of the the um memorializing resolution that New Pauls proposed last month, so it's really based off of it.
Okay. Alright, and then on on the fifth paragraph, it uses rent stabilization and rent control interchangeably, and I don't think they are interchangeable.
I agree with that.
Uh-huh.
Well, it says it's resulting in rent control. What you're saying, it doesn't necessarily result in rent control.
Right, well, they're not they're two different things, so I don't know which one we we address here, okay.
I'm. I mean, I did ha run this like heaven, so he didn't point that out, so I don't know if that would be a problem then, do you?
Um I don't see it as a huge problem, you certainly could amend it to say rent stabilization and or rent control to cover both. If, you know, you're speaking about, I mean, if you you believe they're inconsistent, I'm trying to pull it up here just to look, but are we having a pivot? So where are we talking about?
The the whereas.
I'm I'm not sure they're using it interchangeably though, I think they're just saying that one one is resulting in another, not I don't think they're.
This is.
Yeah, but.
Yeah, that's.
They are in fact two different things.
Right.
Right, but it's not using it's not saying rent stabilization is doing this and then rent control is doing this, it's saying the rent stabilization.
I know, but it's not it's not using it interchangeably. It's just saying, yeah, former rent stabilization resulting in rent control. This is not what it's saying this results in something, I'm supposed to say that they're different. But I mean, I don't if if I don't I'm not, I'm I'm just saying, you know, mathematically, I don't I don't think it's different.
I don't know. I'm just saying I'm just saying it would make it clear, 'cause it doesn't necessarily result in rent control. But if that's.
Okay, yeah, that's a different, yeah, that's a different argument, I don't agree with that, yeah.
Well, it's also just the whereas clause was about the status quo rather than what they're asking to change into, all they talk, I mean, you know, again, it's a whereas clause, it's not really part of, you know, the resolution anyway. Um and if, you know, there's a disagreement as to whether or not it's accurate, you can just omit it altogether, it doesn't change anything.
Okay.
Rent control is much more stringent than rent re- rent stabilization.
Well, what they're saying is that under the current ETPA law, certain municipalities are eligible to adopt a form of rent stabilization. Okay, if again, you know, if, you know, there's a disagreement as to whether or not that whereas is accurate, deleting the paragraph doesn't change anything in terms of what the action you're taking is, so.
We could also just shorten and say uh only these counties
that would be to adopt a form of rent stabilization.
are eligible, just take out the last clause. And just to adopt any form of rent stabilization.
Uh adopt yeah, a form of rent stabilization, period, we can end it right there.
Yeah.
Yeah. I mean, 'cause it that is an important piece of information that a lot of people don't have. And that to me is the point of the whereas is is to make it clear to folks the.
Yeah, I mean, but then I the title of the resolution is supporting universal rent stabilization and control, so I don't know if that
Mm-hmm.
is also a problem then.
Do you have the actual name of the law here?
Well, the l the the bills here.
Yeah. I see we've got a number, but does do they give it a name?
Stabilization regulation.
Um.
Doesn't say them.
I.
And uh.
Check.
Thank you.
No, they don't have names, sort of. I mean, I'm on the New York Senate dot gov website, and it just says Senate Bill with the number.
Right.
So so exactly, I printed on this piece of paper.
I'm sure I fully understand that the make preferential rent payments, everything else makes sense, but that what um what exactly is that saying, Dan, where on this on the sheet you just handed, I think you're getting this on the first line? Um preferential rent is a discount around the tenants pay when the legally registered rent exceeds the actual market.
Uh I can't provide any more explanation.
It's here in the whereas too, when that.
Yeah.
Yeah, they also, yeah, 'cause it's the same, you check the whereas which relates to that one, which it was.
Be it further resolved.
The first be it further, right, Patrick?
Or be it further. Be it further, yeah.
Yeah.
Says the uh would prohibit owners from adjusting the amount of preferential rent upon the renewal of the lease.
And then the definition of preferential rent is the fir I think the first sentence here.
Preferential rent.
That's when, for example, one renter moves out and then the landlord doubles the rent.
Or even when their lease is up, which would, you know, be even more problematic, 'cause it's the same person, when their lease is up, they're not necessarily going anyplace,
Right. Yeah.
and all of a sudden their rent per month increases by hundreds.
Right. So it would say, I don't know what the, I haven't read the what they're trying to pass, but I I'm assuming it would say they can't raise it more than a certain pers percentage per lease renewal.
Right. What is that percentage doing here?
It says the building that said landlords renew rent stabilized leases with increases if any based upon the existing rent levels, it's kind of like the so I don't know, I think the part that's confusing, if if someone has a lease and their lease is up and they move out and and then they've had that lease for for a while and then someone else comes in, they're saying you can't increase the rent, I mean, or it's only about a certain amount, or is it?
The well, there's the uh a certain amount.
Okay, 'cause that.
Is that very simple, do you have anything to add to that?
No.
It wasn't um.
How about if the building is sold, new owners, can they raise raise the rent?
I don't think so.
So this now this piece of uh real estate, an apartment, is now literally controlled by the government, no longer
No, it's controlled by the fact that somebody's living there and has a rent and has a lease.
a private piece of property. But it's no longer a private piece of property that the owner can do what they will with.
So at the end at the end of each lease, they can they can increase, but only a certain amount.
Well.
Can they just shut it down, not open it back up?
Yeah.
Or or will or will or will that be against?
Well, if somebody if if somebody bought a new piece of property that had a rental unit in it.
Yeah.
If a lot of rent control, rent stabilization laws have various loopholes, so you can ask a tenant to leave if you purchase a building. For example, if you say, I have a relative that I wanna give that unit to, then you can ask that tenant to leave. But there are there are very specific cases, because what you're doing, you're protecting is the leaseholder, because uh for example, now, so rent control is much more stringent and you have very small rent increases allowed under rent control. It's not as market responsive as rent stabilization is. So there's some people in New York City, for example, who've been in the same apartment, rent controlled for decades, and they're paying, you know, a couple hundred dollars a month in rent, right?
Now, how does a landlord, I know, I mean, New York City is a very expensive place to live, how does a landlord survive on a few hundred dollars a month?
That's part of that's that's but that's part of the problem of rent control. So rent stabilization allows for more flexibility in responding to market questions, okay? But in either case, it is the government siding with the leaseholders uh more so than the property owners or the the renters. So the the person who's renting doesn't get kicked out of their apartment just because the building gets sold. 'Cause you can imagine a case where suppose you have an individual who wants to empty out all the units in a building in order to increase the rents, right? And so what they do is they form an LLC, they then sell the building to the LLC, which is a new owner, and then the LLC would come in and say, we're kicking everybody out, when it's the same people really, or very similar related to one another, right? So the idea is, how do you reward good landlords, the ones who understand that they're providing a home for people as opposed to the ones who are simply in it to make as much money as they can without really caring about who's staying in their homes? That's what's at issue.
Okay.
You know, and that's the problem, it's it's I I like to call it the seven percent rule, it's like probably seven percent of landlords do bad things, but then we have to make laws so that they that seven percent can't do these bad things, but then the other ninety three percent, they then have to, you know, abide by the laws, most of them would anyway, and that's what we found out when we did Landlord's Night. 'Cause there were several landlords who showed up and said, they're not interested in charging market rates, they were charging several hundred dollars below, either for philosophical reasons or because they really liked the tenant, and so they were not increasing the rent when they could have. By law, they they could have, um by all rights, they could have, but they they liked the family or the person who was renting their unit, right? So this is the constant, for me, this is the constant struggle that we see, is you got mostly good people, but the bad ones are the ones that we've gotta make the laws and the rules for.
Yeah, it's like every every category fits a hat, right?
Mm-hmm.
It's pretty much everything, um. Now, does the state, the third whereas where it says currently, state law does not provide local authority to form a local board that would determine annual allowable rental increases in order to protect tenants from arbitrary rent increases. Um wha does the state document um give some of the power back to municipalities, is that how I'm reading that? Or is this, like, at some point in 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 their decision, will it relinquish some of the control so that municipalities could could make their own laws or have their own numbers and percentages, or or is that is my reading wrong?
Yeah, the idea is like, right, I think if I understand your question correctly, the Emergency Tenant Protection Act of nineteen seventy four, the ETPA, right now only, so it's kind of in fact to do with the fourth one, it's only it's not the New York State, it's New York City, Rothland County, Westchester, so this would open it up so more places, the whole state has access to do this, it's not.
Okay.
It's the, yeah, currently the downstate counties have the power, none of the other counties do. From my understanding, from talking to some members of Kevin Cahill's staff, what would happen is um a county would have to opt in first.
Gotcha.
So and then.
Yeah, and I actually I'm reading um something from Cahill's office, it's counties first have to opt into the ETPA,
Okay.
and then cities, towns, and villages can conduct begin can begin conducting the survey.
Right, so.
Okay, so the local authority in this case would be the county for for the purposes of this.
It would start with the county, start with the county, and then come.
Right, right.
But then cities could craft, within the law, cities could craft their own um their own way of doing it.
Okay.
But then there's another kicker, which is you can't, a a municipality would not be able to institute rent control or stabilization until there was a quote-unquote rent crisis, which is defined, I believe, as less than five percent occupancy. So right now, apparently Kingston meets that standard, but we can't do anything because we don't have access to the law.
So we were, you know, we'd like some more uh rental units in in Kingston, wouldn't we? So uh if builders are gonna come into our town, or our county, or our state, um I I wonder what how they feel about uh rent stabilization and control.
Good landlords don't have a problem with it.
They don't?
No. Because it builds in to the process, and that's the thing, is, you know, we'd be able to work with landlords, for example, to to tailor the process.
I mean, I'm I'm just, yeah.
So I've already I've talked to several landlords in in uh looking at the bill for landlords tonight, and they didn't wanna necessarily speak in public.
Mm-hmm.
But uh they're not averse on the face of it to rent stabilization. 'Cause again, it it provides for income, it provides for uh increase in value, you know, good rent stabilization laws are somewhat flexible. But we also need to protect those folks who can't handle quick increases in their rents. So that's the crisis we're facing right now, is that a a lot of the rents have gone up ten, fifteen, twenty, thirty percent just in the last couple of years. And if you're one of those folks who's already on your tippy toes and the, you know, the economic waters are just below your nostrils, any ripple on that surface of that water is gonna get ya.
Those legal terms?
Yeah.
Man, that's gonna be a rule, that was that was.
Yeah.
But but also, what we're voting here, we're not having the discussion of whether we want it or not, we're just voting on letting the state know that we wanna have the option to opt into it, if we have those discussions and decide that we want to.
And we could only do it again if there is a crisis.
Yeah.
So it's not like we could just throw out, this is, you know, developers come in, you could only charge four hundred dollars a month for this apartment, but it's not, like, it it has to be a crisis, which, you know, I guess.
And what's what's what uh what is a crisis?
The five five percent.
Below five percent occupancy.
Five below.
Below.
In other words, in other words, if you're moving to Kingston right now, it's not that easy to find an apartment, even if you got the money.
Right.
Right, it's because so many things are rented out.
So why aren't builders just like knocking on our door to build apartments?
They are, Kingstonian.
Uh-huh. All sorts of different apartments.
They are. Rupco.
Uh they're knocking.
And again, it's a memorializing resolution, so again, we're just we're just saying we support the the initiatives in it, so
Yeah.
when it when it actually comes down to the time where we're actually gonna be, you know, making decisions and changing, well, you know, then then it'll get a lot, you know, ob obviously a lot more involved.
This is get, yeah, this just gives us an opportunity to have a voice eventually.
Yeah, get into the get into the.
Yeah.
But it's not saying this is definitely what we're doing, we're not setting rent right now, we're not.
No, I understand what a memorializing resolution is, but I'm just I'm just, you know, there's obviously
Yeah.
some questions that have to be answered about uh, you know, you know, like I was like I'm saying, is this gonna deter people, I mean, even our even our tone, you know, even our um you know, the tone we set, uh will that deter people from coming in and building units, which we need so desperately? You know, that's that's a that's a question.
It is a question, yeah, absolutely, but I think the general idea is that since this is a memorializing resolution, a memorializing resolution isn't gonna prevent any developers who are looking at Kingston.
No, I know it's not gonna prevent them, but.
And maybe we can use it as a spur, get 'em to come in quick.
No, no.
And Ariel's writing, she's writing quick now.
Please write that was a joke, if that's what you're writing, yeah. Irony is not translatable.
Tippy tippy toes, tippy toes. Is translatable a word?
Yes.
I don't think it is.
It is. If I use it, it's a word. Did you ever listen to Snoop Dogg, did you ever listen to Snoop Dogg?
You're not Snoop Dogg.
Gonna tell you're gonna tell me your personality is not a word?
I know, I know Snoop Dogg, and you're no Snoop.
I'm not claiming to be Snoop Dogg, I'm talking about his conventional words. He didn't have my style, you're right.
That's right.
The other thing that uh came to us, well, Randy and I got an email, I don't, did you see it?
Yeah.
Um the one piece that I did not add in here, uh 'cause it wasn't a new call, so I don't, but it was mentioned to me and Randy, so I just wanted to bring it to people's attention if this is something that you wanted to add into, um is adding a further r uh be it further resolved, um another bill which is a good cause eviction legislation or bill. So it's eviction legislation to bring renters' rights to tenants in smaller buildings and in manufactured home communities. So the idea behind that one is you have to have good cause to evict somebody. So if I have, if I'm renting out a an apartment and I realize that you could only pay five hundred dollars, the bill could pay eight hundred dollars, I can just get rid of you, so I can take him in. So good cause legislation would be, am I have to have it wrong?
No, this, I wonder, Patrick's gonna fight you on that. Worry.
And and so this would protect you, 'cause I would have to have reason to evict the person, you know, I've got the um landlord would have to have reason to evict somebody, not just to say, well, person B can pay more.
I have a I have a question.
Just because I have questions doesn't mean I'm fighting against it, Randy.
I have a question, Dan, maybe you can answer this more, because I I'm, whenever this comes up, I I get I get frustrated because the to me, there's like a a like, I'm a landlord, I don't want you, and you're evicted and you're out, and we set your stuff on the curb. I know I know really good landlords who have basically spent months and years trying to evict really, really, really bad people that they couldn't evict. Aren't the laws to like evict, aren't they pretty stringent, i- is it, I mean, is it that easy to just evict someone, well, we're gonna raise the rent, you can't afford it, you're out? I mean, I don't think it's quite that simple, but.
Far from that simple.
Right, and but yet every time you talk about like people getting evicted and we gotta, you know, it's like they're they're the victims, and I know a lot of times they are, so I'm not I'm not being cruel here. But a lot of times, the landlords are, you know, can't get rid of people that should be gone, or that are doing damage, or that are doing damage to property.
And if you don't, there's a difference between trying to put somebody out during a valid lease and having somebody move out
Remove.
when the lease is over, okay? And if you have questions about how difficult it is to actually pursue and successfully evict somebody, you know, go down to city court any, you know, any Thursday and sit there and listen.
Right, that's what I'm.
I mean, it's not a simple, it's far from a simple process.
Right.
And the law already requires evictions um to be based on good cause.
That's what I'm saying. Right, so that's.
You can't just evict people.
So you'd be uncomfortable adding those.
Jury dependency.
So I would be uncomfortable adding that in there, 'cause I think it's already difficult, and so to just add more layers of of difficulty, I think is, I mean, I think it's a, I think the system is probably probably.
The critical piece of the legislation that Andrew is referring to now is not really about good cause, it's about tying good cause to the um basically to the um amount of an increase and creating a presumption that if the increase is more than a certain percentage, okay?
Okay. Some people then will have to leave, they couldn't afford to stay.
Yeah, and if you look at it, that's hidden, and do you have the language up here?
I.
But isn't that covered anywhere else in here or not, not maybe not explained?
It's it's tied to this, okay, but it's not really about good cause, about creating good cause evictions, it's about.
It's it's I think I think the concept or the notion of it's in here, but it's it's not, they they don't link it to evic, they don't link it to evictions, basically.
Let me read to you what the. Okay, I will read to you what the, hold on a second.
So we're obviously not the first people who have uh tried to do this rent control stabilization. And Randy, you're saying in New York, it's actually backfired on on some level and has become a detriment.
Rent control, not rent stabilization.
It says control up here.
Yeah, maybe that may be something that we must make out. I I I put this from New Pauls, but it may be something that we want to get rid of any control and just keep the rent stabilization, that's what I think.
I'd go with that.
Has there been has there been any any problems with rent stabilization?
Yeah. I agree with that as well.
Well, rent stabilization is just more flexible, and so that's that's the question, is then, so suppose we do get this power, there would be some question about uh how much power would we, the Kingston uh city government, have in making it more or less uh stringent, right? And so I think we would have a fair amount of leeway in any specific regulations we decided on if we decided to engage in rent stabilization of some sort.
And rent stabilization would be, let's say, maybe a one percent increase per year or something like that, that would be a stabilization?
If uh.
Or two percent per year?
It's it's a little more complex than that, so for example,
It's more complex than that.
uh you have a rental uh board that uh
I'm just looking at what I'm against, I'll get there.
looks at and to some degree determines, you have a rent guidelines board.
The third whereas.
Alright. And so, where is it here?
The third warehouse here, I'm gonna talk to Randy, it kinda gives you gives you a little bit.
Yeah. So, I mean, this is an issue, because once you're in a rent stabilized apartment, your landlord can only increase your rent by a percentage determined by the rent guidelines board. Alright, and so the rent does not depend on your income level, the apartment size, how many people live there, any other factors. The biggest impact on the rent is how often the apartment is turned over in the past, as well as any renovations the landlord has undertaken. So that's one, that's that's how they do it in New York City.
There you go.
But it's not necessary that we would have to follow the exact same plan as they do in New York City. So even in New York City, under rent stabilization, once your income gets above a certain level, your apartment will no longer be rent stabilized. I think it's like two hundred thousand dollars, so if you make more than two hundred thousand dollars,
Yeah.
then your landlord can say, well, I'm gonna charge you what the market will bear.
Yeah, putting control on uh how much people earn, and then is uh I th I believe is often a um anti I mean, there's many people, right, there's many people right now who are making uh a certain income,
Mm-hmm.
and they will not go and look for income higher because they may lose their apartments because of that, so.
Yeah, I mean, people do know making two hundred thousand.
And I'm not saying two hundred thousand, a lot of people make two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah. Where?
What's that?
He's talking about you.
What's that?
He's talking about you.
Last I checked, yeah.
Um uh I'm just saying, uh when you do that to people, when you say, okay, if you make over this amount of money, then we take your apartment away, well, there's no incentive, there's no incentive to.
No, you don't take the apartment away. You don't take the apartment.
Oh, you're oh, or you're rent.
You're saying that now the landlord can charge a market rate uh for the lease.
Yeah.
So instead of bumping the the lease up every time it's renewed by the percentage that the rent control board thinks is appropriate, then the landlord, then you remove the controls, you're not kicking anybody out of the apartment.
It's it's probably better to look at it backwards, if here here's the market rent, this is what the rent is, this is what everyone's paying. But if you're only making this amount, then it then then you actually scale it down, you know, downward, more or less. I mean, again, in in everything, it would be different, but you know what I mean, so rather than rather than going saying, alright, now you make this amount, so you're paying that, so if you just take the mark market rate, but if someone's not making enough to to afford. rather than going saying, alright, now you make this amount, so you're paying that, so if you just take the mar- market rate, but if someone's not making enough to to afford that, then that's where the stabilization comes in, or that's where you're right, like getting there, so you're, so for the lower, that that's where it's it's adjusting downward from from that market rate, but if you're making enough to afford the market rate, then then that's that's okay, you can, it's not a.
The other issue is most of the, if you read Matthew Dedson's book, uh, Evicted, he shows really powerfully and clearly how,
You can be charged a market rate.
most of the problem in terms of rental units is at the low end of the spectrum, for the people who have the most difficulty affording a place to live. So that's the real question, is how do we organize that end of the rental market so that people who are poor don't get kicked out and don't end up with DSS? You know, so for example, I was just hearing a story yesterday about a guy, uh, he was in his apartment, he ended up having a an emergency hospital visit. Because of that, he wasn't able to pay his rent for two months, the landlord evicted him for lack of payment. Now he's homeless and he needs certain social services, but DSS put him in a hotel out in Kerhonson. So how's he gonna get from Kerhonson back into Kingston? So he appealed, they finally brought him here, they put him in the warming center on the night, or they dropped him off at the warming center on a night when it was too warm for the warming center to be open, so he basically spent the night on the streets. Had to reapply to DSS, they then put him in a hotel down in Highland. So, you know, through no real fault of this guy's own, he's being put all over the county. And, you know, these are the kinds of issues that we wanna really work with so that we prevent folks like that from getting kicked out of their apartments, while at the same time making sure that the landlord is covered, nobody here is saying, you know, the landlord should just not ask for the rent in that time period. But there's a and another thing for us to u- ultimately think about too, is to create down a new policy, have a landlord tenants board. And so the landlord tenants board will negotiate conflicts between landlords and tenants. So it's a mediation process before you go into court for evictions and try to bring the sheriff or the police or something like that. And that allows for a lot of flexibility if it's done right. So I'm just saying that this memorializing resolution doesn't tie us to anything at all, and like Bill was saying, if we do in fact decide, if some of us decide it looks like we would like to try this if we ever get the power to do it, then there would be a lot of discussion, that's why we're doing the housing hearings, so we can be really clear and, you know, have a good idea, cause we don't wanna price a lot of our mom and pop landlords out of the market. That's gonna be a problem too.
That's the other side, right?
Right, and so that's how do we find that balance, where we're protecting people certainly at the low end of the rental markets, while also being sure that landlords get a fair return on their investment. You know, those are squishy terms.
And this will just give us the opportunity to have these discussions, especially after we listen to all the people who come to the forums.
And then.
And, you know, like I said in the beginning, the only reason that this is coming to us now versus after the forums is because it it needs to be done if it's, we wanna support the state saying we would like to
Yeah.
have a voice on what we would like to do eventually. So that's kind of the reason of the timeline, but we're gonna continue to listen to everybody.
Oh, yeah.
And figure out what the best solution is. Um, but let me read, what am I reading now? I know, I got the number, but this is this is the the good cause legislation.
That is, that that's what I see as the critical part of the good cause legislation, that's what is basically the change. And it relates to the amount of rent increases and a presumption that's created with regard to a landlord that raises rent in a small unit more than that percentage, um, and whether or not failure to pay that increase constitutes a good cause for eviction, so, yeah.
And I will read this. The tenant has failed to pay rent due and owing, provided however that the rent due and owing or any part thereof did not result from a rent increase which is unconscionable or imposed for the purpose of circumventing the intent of this article. In determining whether all or part of the rent due and owing is the result of an inconscionable rent increase, or rent, sorry, rent increase, it shall be a rebuttal presumption that the rent for a dwelling not protected by rent regulation is unconscionable if said rent has been increased in any calendar year by a percentage exceeding one and one-half times the annual percentage change in the consumer price index for the region in which the housing accommodation is located, as established the August preceding the calendar year in question. That makes sense?
One and one-half times, so does that mean fifty percent?
Not one and one-half percent of the.
One and a half, right. So basically, it is, um, bringing smaller units that are currently not within the scope of, you know, rent control or rent stabilization into, you know, this sphere by creating a rebuttable presumption that if a landlord is moving to evict for charging more than that amount,
Right.
then, you know, the presumption is that that's not good cause.
Yeah.
So it's it's very different than the first bit of legislation that you're supporting, in that the first bit of legislation is only asking the state to give you another vehicle to address this issue. This is much more specific legislation with regard to, um, you know, the burden of proof and presumptions that are applicable in rental tendering.
Right, and that would supersede anything we would do anyway, right? Right, cause that would without be on the state, oh, if that passes that, I mean, that's that's nothing we couldn't say, no, we wanna.
If the if the state passes.
Well, well. Correct.
Right, so that. So when we get control, we're gonna only be able to control what we can, like like now, there's certain things we we can't we can't do, but there, you know, in in all avenues, and that would be one that we really couldn't mess with the language of that if they pass that per se.
And how a judge in landlord tenant court applies it and how the circumstances, you know, I mean, it's.
Yeah. I mean, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
A problem with adding this legislation in or keeping it as it's.
The. No, I don't have a problem with it, I don't I don't think we need to add it, but I think I I don't, I think that's that's, I'm okay with that, I'm comfortable with that.
It's different than what you were originally thinking.
Yeah, yeah, a little bit. But I don't, um, I don't know if it makes a difference to add it or not, because again, that's gonna, that's all kind of part of it anyway, I mean, there's probably a lot of things we could probably dig up and add,
Is there actual?
but I don't I don't think it really does anything for this piece as far as personal though.
Uh, yeah, it's just, um, we had a reach out today asking about this, so I just wanted to bring it to, uh, the council.
Is there an actual bill with this in it?
With this one? Yeah, it is bill two eight nine two.
Two eight two nine two?
So, yeah, it's in the senate, so S two eight nine two.
Two eight nine two.
And that one looks like it's a newer bill. This was introduced in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty regular sessions, unlike the others from twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, so it may not even be as timely.
A little bit, yeah.
I wasn't looking at it, no. Um, so that one, that one might not even be as timely, so I mean, we could also decide not to, um, add it tonight.
I'm really helping too. And. We go back and back.
I think the ones that were that are in the memorializing resolution are, um, but this one is a newer, the good cause is a newer one, so we might have the time, I d- but I didn't have t- I didn't have the opportunity to find that out, especially.
Right, it might be a good idea to to see if we can have somebody give us a presentation on that one.
What?
Give us more understanding, uh, around it.
What?
Now, we're more, we're Randy, you're saying that rent stabilization be a a more, uh, appropriate avenue than rent control.
Right.
And here it says that, uh, there with this, S, I'm sorry, repeals provisions permitting rent increases after vacancy of a housing accommodation, it's on the front page here at the bottom. And it says, under the rent stabilization, landlords receive twenty percent statutory vacancy bonus every time the apartment turns over. So this rents, some of these rent stabilization deals seem to be not in the renters' favor.
Well, it's trying to get rid of that.
So, but I mean, obviously, this was put in at one point by a group much like ourselves trying to enact rent stabilization, right? At one point?
I'm not sure what you're saying.
This this, um, vacancy bonus was obviously put in at some point into a, somewhere.
The statutory vacancy bonus.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so this was this was something we're trying to get rid of now, right?
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so.
Twenty percent statutory vacancy bonus.
So this, so in this, when another group tried to do rent stabilization, this turned out to be not such a great thing.
Well, what you would.
This piece of it.
What you would probably institute instead would be, um, uh, a market rate increase, you would allow for a market rate increase.
No, but I think what Patrick, if you don't mind, what Patrick's trying to say is at some point when they were talking about how to do rent stabilization, somebody said, hey, we should make it so that when an apartment turns over, there is a twenty, we could do this, so.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's a little more complicated than that, because the way bills are negotiated in the senate is you have two sides. And there's a distinct possibility that it was the landlord lobby that threw out the twenty percent vacancy increase in order to offset the, um,
Rent stabilization.
The rent, the rest of the rent stabilization, you can't look at a bill, you know,
Right.
without looking at the entire legislative history.
Right.
Um, and.
That's probably what happened, you're saying.
Yeah. I'm not saying that's what probably happened, I'm saying that you never know what happened, because you don't have the legislative history in front of you with a bill jacket,
Right. Cause all the negotiations that go on and the.
or the statements that all the legislators made when they were debating the enactment of the bill. And rent stabilization laws traditionally, and Randy's been, you know, um, you know, researching this at length, have been extremely contentious and extremely, um, you know, subject to negotiation by both sides. You know, so you give some, you get some, you know, so whether, I mean, how that particular provision ended up in the law,
Mm-hmm.
you know, I wouldn't speculate about that without having the actual bill jacket.
Yeah, yeah.
And it could have been in, didn't it?
Yeah.
And it could have been in, right, yeah.
Yeah. Or they needed one more vote, and someone said, let's do this.
Right.
Right. No, I understand, I understand how that happens.
Oh, well, that's for that, if you vote for this, then what you got?
Right.
So mistakes happen and things happen, even with the best intentions.
Right, so, you know, my sense is that it's good to vote for the memorializing resolution, it gives us a tool to use if we need it. We're not committing ourselves to anything, uh, and further down, and we can keep doing research, we've got more folks to see, we're gonna have another housing night, uh, people who are gonna be talking about, uh, policy and, you know, various programs, housing programs, uh, in other places. And so we might be able, I might, uh, see if I can get somebody who's more of an expert on rent control or rent stabilization, who could come in and talk about that specific issue, or if we found somebody, we could bring them also to caucus to talk about it, so that we could get a much clearer idea of how these things work in other places.
Right.
Cause the other thing is, New York's not the only place with these laws, and it may be that there's, you know, Portland, Oregon has a better rent stabilization, uh, regime than New York City does, so.
And it would be disappointing if we go through all of this, come up, you know, talk to these po- people who understand this policy,
Yeah, we fly them, folks, it's important. Yeah, we fly them, right.
say, these are the things that we could help the tenants that that won't hurt the landlords, but then we can't do anything, you know?
Right.
So going through all of this, hearing from a lot of different folks and different, you know, policy landlords, tenants, and then we have the, don't have the power of actually making change. So this gives us that opportunity, if they pass this, is how I'm looking at it.
Yeah. I would agree with that.
I'll make a motion.
I could read this, and I am, I will take out the end control, I went through everything else in detail, I didn't really look at the, uh, title, so I apologize for that.
Yeah.
Um, so I'll take out end control, and I'll give that to.
Are we gonna take out that other phrase?
Uh, and, well, yeah, I mean, I still think that they're two different things, but if you guys are all uncomfortable with it, I could also take that out. In the one, two, three, four, fifth whereas, is that which one, Randy?
Yeah.
So just end it after a form of rent stabilization?
Or just change the s- the word control to stabilization there, just so it's consistent through the whole document.
Fifth one?
The fifth one, yeah.
No, that wouldn't make sense.
Fifth whereas.
I'm saying rent stabilization resulting in rent stabilization, then it would say.
Good bud.
Well, our other little doctor form of rent stabilization, resulting in, so if you just, if you had the word rent stabilization laws.
Only applying.
You could even say resulting in it only applying to tenants in aid out of, in aid of the state's count- sixty-two counties.
Pronouns come to the rescue.
But every, you, enough folks are not happy with rent control, just to be safe.
You're su- you're supposed to be the professor, right?
Well, if we're removing the word control.
Yeah.
From the beginning, well, for that one, it looks like it's rent control and stabilization, but I g- I'll just change, we'll change that to it, so just.
Yeah, I like that change.
I like.
Wait, can you read that to me so I have it right?
Sure, I could also give you a copy of this too, so the title is going to be Resolution of the City of Kingston Supporting Universal Rent Stabilization.
Alright.
Randy, did you have any land?
And then the f- one, two, three, four, fifth.
Sorry.
Mm-hmm.
Whereas, whereas under the current ETPA law, only municipalities in Nassau, Westchester, Marlin Counties, and New York City are eligible to adopt a form of rent stabilization resulting in it only applying to tenants. So just taking out rent control and replacing it with it, thank you.
Okay.
Do I need to write the the modifications or is it just a couple sentences?
Did, um, any landlords speak against rent stabilization?
Also, I'm assuming. And I was reading that before.
We didn't ask specifically about these laws, but I've spoken to one or two, we didn't wanna appear in public.
I think I'd say what. And it's a point was, and I wanna say as pretty.
And, you know, we did talk about it. Um, and so, they're not, they were not on the face of it against rent stabilization laws.
Doesn't sound bad.
The question is, with many of these things is, how do we negotiate it so it's fair for both sides as much as possible, right? Um, and that's why it's also important to look at different laws and different ways of doing it.
Cause it could actually help them, it could actually help them in some way.
Yeah, well, it also, yeah.
Like if they're if they're within the parameters of of a small increase, instead of people saying, well, you can't increase and fighting them, you know, if they say, well, yes, I can legally in a way, so, you know, my.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think it'll be good.
So, resolution to adopt a memorializing resolution to support universal rent stabilization as per attached, which will include the changes, so is there a motion?
Vote.
He motioned, I seconded it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, thank you.
Uh, so brief announcement, if I may?
There you go. You're gonna dinner. Does it involve you?
No, the water metaphor, it was actually ice, frozen, no. The, um, the, uh, session we're gonna do, the housing session we're gonna do on homelessness and housing insecurity is gonna be same night and time, but it's gonna be at Clinton Avenue Methodist Church at one twenty-two Clinton Avenue. Because there were, uh, a number of people who would like to testify, but there are issues of them getting from over there to over here. Plus, I think by actually meeting in an area where a lot of them, uh, live, we'd be able to get a more visceral sense of what they're going through, alright?
That's cool.
I can repeat that, which one is that, the homelessness?
It's the housing, uh, insecurity and homelessness session.
Right, so that would be at what?
Is that? That's May first, I think.
Uh, no, thirtieth.
No, the thirtieth is the, uh.
The thirtieth. No, that's, I have that on the twenty-ninth, that's Monday, the twenty-ninth.
It's my first.
It's my first, okay. So the thirtieth is developers, and my first is housing and security.
And the brief. Homelessness and housing insecurity, uh-huh.
Okay.
Here we go.
I think it's the twenty-ninth, yeah.
Uh, twenty-ninth is developers, May first is homelessness and housing insecurity and cure.
Okay.
And May twenty-ninth is policy advocates. Alright, so, um, it's going to be at Clinton Avenue Methodist Church, which is one twenty-two Clinton Avenue.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Randy. Thank you for doing these as well.
And.
Yeah, thank you, Randy, yeah.
I think this is it, so I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion.
It's like, oh, everybody wants to say.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Oppose.
Alright, Phil's saying, thank you very much.
That's. No, I gotta, I'll I'll vote, I guess I gotta do that.